Thank you for everyone being here tonight. I call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order at 7 o'clock on October 4th, 2016. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item on our agenda is the honors, awards, and recognitions. Dr. Meyer.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Karan. This time, Dr. Graham, will you come up and help assist us with these honors, awards,
This is an exciting time of night when we take time to honor some of our students. And our first recognitions will be done by Jennifer Weaver. Jennifer would come forward and introduce our Senior of the Month program.
Good evening. We have four diverse and talented groups of seniors for you tonight. We have a representative from each high school. From Auburn High School, Mr. Polley's here. From Blacksburg High School, Mr. Stewart. From Christiansburg High School, Mr. Dabler. And from Eastern Montgomery, Mr. Knott.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Members of the board, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Karan. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce you to our Senior of the Month from Auburn High School, Laurel Miller. And at this time, I'd like to ask her and her mom and dad to come forward. I know that you have Laurel's profile in front of you, but I'd like to share a few words that many of the staff have joined together to make about Laurel. Laurel is a dedicated learner, dependable young lady, talented athlete, and creative artist. She also demonstrates an exemplary work ethic, is very insightful, and is very dependable. Laurel is a young lady who always carries herself in a very professional manner, and she is fully capable and mature enough to handle any task she is given. She is highly motivated to learn and to be a good leader. She works very well in groups and often coaches her peers to think through projects logically and thoroughly, to produce outcomes that are in-depth and demonstrate mastery of the content. Ladies and gentlemen, our Senior of the Month from Auburn High School, Laurel Miller.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer. I'd just like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize just a few of the super seniors we have here in Montgomery County Public Schools. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Blacksburg High School's Student of the Month, Judith Tauber, who is here with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Tauber, if they'd like to come on I'd like to read you a few words of some of the teachers and what they said about Judith. Judith Tauber is a top-notch language student. She always is prepared for class and participates well. Outside of class, she seeks additional opportunities to practice her French, German, and Spanish, and learn more about the culture. Judith loves to learn and is well on her way to becoming fluent in four languages. Blacksburg High School's Student of the Month, Judith Tauber.
I am pleased to announce to the school board that the October Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School is Amber Hall. I would like to ask Amber and her mother, Shawna Hall, to come up at this time. Amber is the SGA co-president, a senior class officer, a member of the Beta Club and the National Honor Society, and a student mentor. She is on the competition cheer team, is a captain for the sideline cheer team, and runs track. Amber is known for her wonderful school spirit and for being hardworking and dedicated in both her extracurricular activities and her academic endeavors. She has a wonderful sense of humor and cares for others. She plans to attend Virginia Tech and pursue a career in the medical industry. Congratulations, Amber.
Dr. Meyer, Ms. Karan, Dr. Graham, members of the board, it's my honor tonight to introduce to you Eastern Montgomery High School's October Senior of the Month, Brendan Pettis. He's accompanied tonight by his parents. If they would come forward, please. One of Brendan's favorite teachers, EMHS biology teacher Melanie Kirby, had this to say about him. Brendan Pettis is an outstanding young man and an absolute pleasure to have as a student in human anatomy and physiology class. He is able to absorb difficult material, manipulate it in his mind, and give brilliant assessments that were beyond anything his classmates were able to produce. Brendan has said that he wants to go into the medical field, most likely pursuing a career as a registered nurse. I have absolutely no doubts that Brendan will do remarkable work in that field. Congratulations, Brendan.
We will take a five-minute break so that all the board members and audience may have time to congratulate our seniors of the month.
The board sets aside up to 30 minutes for citizens to address the board issues pertaining public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. I do not have any individuals sign up to speak. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Hearing and seeing none, public address is closed. Next item on our agenda is approval of our consent items. If there's nothing to be pulled from the agenda, we will consider it approved. Is there any discussion regarding consent agenda, board members? Hearing and seeing none, consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is payment of the bills.
So move.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We pay our bills. The next one is our financial summary report. May I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of it?
So move.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our report. And the next one is, I'm turning over to Dr. Meyer, I think.
Yeah. All right. So, tonight, I'm excited to have Bellevue Elementary present their STEAM program. In order to get them home early, we moved them to the front of our agenda tonight and have Mr. Muller, our new principal, to come forward and introduce their program.
Good evening. We are very excited to be here tonight representing Bellevue. We have, there are so many exciting things going on at our school that our students are here to share. You know, our teachers, they work tirelessly, effortlessly, all hours of the day. They are there on the weekend, putting these things together for our kids, and they do a brilliant job. Before I have the kids up here, I do want to especially thank Ms. Becca Rainey, who did so much to get this presentation together today. I couldn't be more grateful to her and everything she does to our school. But without saying anymore, I'd like the students to come up, and they're very excited to tell you about our school.
Hello, my name is Cole, and I'm in 4th grade at Bellevue Elementary School. When I'm older, I want to be a vet. One thing that helped me pursue this is 3D Printing Club and learning to respect each
Hello, my name is Isabella, and I am in 5th grade at Bellevue. When I grow up, I want to be a veterinarian. One thing at Bellevue that helps me pursue this is learning.
Hello, my name is Akina, and I am in 5th grade at Bellevue Elementary School. And when I grow up, I want to be inventive. And one thing at Bellevue that helps me pursue this is being in play in drama club.
Hi, my name is Darrell. I'm in 5th grade, and when I grow up, I want to be a designer. And one of the things that helps me pursue is art class, because we get to do cool things.
Hi, my name is Sonia, and I am a 5th grader at Bellevue Elementary. When I grow up, I want to be legendary. One thing I do at Bellevue that helps me pursue this is acting in the school play with drama club.
Hello, my name is Hargill, and I am in 5th grade at Bellevue. When I grow up, I want to be educative. One thing that helps me with this is learning from teachers.
Hello, my name is Christian. I am in 4th grade at Bellevue Elementary School. When I grow up, I want to be happy. Something that helps me pursue this, something that helps me pursue this is by helping younger kids than me, and also joining clubs such as 3D Printing Club, iMotion. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison, and when I grow up, I want to be creative. And one thing at Bellevue that helps me pursue is at nature club when I climb.
My name, hello. Good evening. My name is Andrew, and I am in 5th grade at Bellevue Elementary. What I want, what I want to be when I grow up is an inventor. One thing that helps me pursue this at Bellevue is Bellevue Makers, because we're doing, we're creating new things like the boat with, like the cardboard box challenge.
Hi, my name is Ben. I'm a 5th grader at Bellevue Elementary. When I grow up, I want to, I want to be respectful. One thing that Bellevue helps me by being respectful is guidance with Ms. Stoker and learning about empathy. Here's a, here's a video of some of the fun things we did last year. We have a small gift from the Bellevue 3D printer.
That's awesome. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
That's so cool.
That is neat.
That's okay. It's very much okay.
I'll take another one.
I have one, thank you.
Oh, we missed one over here. There we go.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
We're supposed to hit play.
Are you guys ready to see your video?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, we're gonna do that, and then we'll come back up and take a picture. Sound good?
All right.
Hey there, Montgomery County School Board! It's the Bellevues here, reporting from the WBEES studio, the home of our live morning announcements. We love our school. We're proud of our school, and we want to share some of the exciting, engaging, awesome learning we do here at Bellevue Elementary. We are going to start by showing you some of the technology we use in our upper-grade classrooms. Our 4th grade teachers are Google-certified educators, and we use Google education apps like Paradox and Seesaw daily.
Using technology for everyday instructions keeps our teachers informed about our progress and keeps us accountable for getting our work done.
In 2014, our former gifted resource teacher and our librarian founded an after-school program, Bellevue Makers, which introduces low-tech and high-tech topics to all the kids at our school. Sometimes we work with pool noodles or cardboard, and sometimes we work with Arduino, microprocessors, and robotics. But the goal is always to think creatively and critically, to plan and advise our designs. We don't always succeed on our first try, but we learn to keep working and do not get discouraged.
When did you prepare out the sauce?
I think Bellevue Makers is different from things I do during the school day, because it's work and it helps you think, but there's no right or wrong answer to it. It helps you think with your own thoughts.
There was someone who wanted to go to Bellevue Makers. I would convince them, like, saying, "It's fun. You get to work, but not like the type of work that like multiplication and division. But like, it's work where you can stretch your mind."
Last year, our teachers worked hard to find ways to include design challenges into classroom instruction. So several times during the year, we would read a book and then work to solve a problem presented in the book by building with hands-on materials. Here are some images of those projects.
Do you know a Virginia Tech professor that created software that does career-oriented games? We can use it during the writing time, because we're getting all sorts of practice with writing clearly and completely.
Do you know a Virginia Tech professor that created software that does career-oriented video games? We can use it during the writing time, because we're getting all sorts of practice with writing clearly and completely. It's called game engineering.
Bellevue also makes sure we get our families involved on hands-on learning with Family Steampnake. We'd love for you to come visit on October 13th for our next event. We have lots of stations that use to design, process, and challenge you think creatively, for you to think creatively. Here are some photos from last year's Family Steampnake.
Bellevue is an awesome elementary school full of creative thinkers. Our teachers work hard to get the resources we need to learn in exciting ways. We write grants and think out to the box that we all have opportunities to learn the super skills for 21st century critical thinking, collaboration, and communication and creativity.
Thank you, Mr. Muller, and students, and teachers, and parents for being here. You know, as you can see, school board, the Bellevues are very busy. And technology is a huge part of their school. And they, they've embraced technology. And, you know, one thing that I would like to point out, something that's, that's pretty neat, that they've piloting for us this year, is a program called Seesaw. And what that is, is an electronic portfolio for students. And so, in fact, one of their teachers will be presenting at our principal's meeting and encouraging other schools to pick this up. But what we would like to see at some point in Montgomery County, or for all students in Montgomery County, to have an electronic portfolio that will go with them from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, so they can actually have a place for their work when they leave us. And so it's pretty neat. And Bellevue, they want to pilot this, and they have some Google-certified teachers that are just loving Google, and we're real proud of them. So, anything?
Yeah, I think it's great. And, see, for me, after visiting the school last year and then seeing this, is not, obviously not a surprise. And, you know, I'll reiterate that I think it is good that we do pilot things. And, you know, when we were talking about professional development, too, I know that a lot of this comes from, from the teachers there. And I've talked about, you know, wanting some of our own teachers to do some, you know, PD and kind of the cross-pollination of ideas that are working really well. And I'd really like to see more of this across the county, because it's obviously a huge success. So, kudos to the teachers, especially.
Well, and I'd like to say I appreciate some of the wording that was chosen, legendary and respect, and happy, because I truly believe you can talk to a lot of people. After they grow up, they're not so happy, and they don't respect so much, and they're not so legendary. So you keep those things in mind, and you can do what you want to do. So I just love those choices of, of words that you guys used. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, and I liked the bow tie touch on some of the stuffs.
I really did. Great touch. That was awesome.
And I asked Dr. Meyer, is anything?
I had nothing to do with it.
He did not do anything about it, so.
Excellent.
Can we invite them to come up? The parents didn't get to take a picture while they were speaking. Can we have them come up here? Is that okay?
How about they come up and take pictures? Yeah, come on up, guys.
Great presentation. Yes. Ready to go to bed, do homework.
What do you want us to do?
Just smile.
You want us to get out the way?
No, I think if you guys sit there and smile, it'd be perfect. They're not tall enough to cover you. I don't know. Some of them are getting pretty close. All right, are we ready? Oh, you guys look so good. Let's close this. All right, one, two, three. Just keep smiling, you're doing great. Just a few more, doing good. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for our necklaces. Thank you.
It was wonderful.
All right. So, next week is the National School Lunch Week. Our school nutrition department has left a coupon at your place. You're invited to have lunch at any of our schools as frequently as you would like next week, and we will cover the cost of the meals. Our lunches are nutritious and kid-appealing, and I think they are, they are adult-appealing as well. So, so go to any school you want all week long, and you can eat lunch there. So, I'd love, love to see you.
All week, baby.
All week. That's right. It's a pretty good deal.
I might go to like three or four different schools, they'll never know. One day.
Walk in the high school, my heart, I'm gonna have a heart attack. What are you doing here?
You can do it. That'd be great. All right. So, October is Disability Awareness Month. During the month, we celebrate the uniqueness of each, each of our students. Thank you for your support, our special education program, and, and this has been left here as well for you, so, perfect. Yep. All right. Other things, been real busy the, the last couple of weeks, all of us have, I know. I've had some exciting times. I was invited to participate in the Blacksburg High School Homecoming Parade, and I actually rode in a 1966 Mustang convertible. It was incredible. It was, I was really scared to move it, I was afraid to touch anything. It was so awesome, but just had a great time. And then, that Friday, went to the football game, invited to the tailgate at Blacksburg High School, and Ms. Graham was serving, serving dinner for everyone, and that was really good food.
It was very good.
Where was, where was the food catered from?
It was catered from Top of the Steers PKs.
Just great. Excellent food. Next, I had the opportunity also to go back last week to Blacksburg High School, and Chief Wilson spoke to our Black Awareness Club about the Books to Badges program, and just a real good reception for him, and a lot of great questions.
Bellevue is an awesome elementary school full of creative thinkers. Our teachers work hard to get the resources we need to learn in exciting ways. We write grants and think out to the box that we all have opportunities to learn the super skills for 21st century critical thinking, collaboration, and communication and creativity.
Thank you, Mr. Muller, and students and teachers and parents for being here. And as you can see, school board, the Bellevue Bees are very busy. And technology is a huge part of their school. And they've embraced technology. And, um, you know, one thing that I would like to point out, something that's pretty neat that they've pil- they're piloting for us this year, it's a program called CSOW. And what that is, is electronic portfolio for students. And so, um, in fact, one of their teachers will be presenting at our principals meeting and encouraging other schools to pick this up. But what we would like to see at some point in Montgomery County, or for all students in Montgomery County, to have an electronic portfolio that will go with them from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, so they can actually have a place for their work when they leave us. And so it's pretty neat. And Bellevue, they wanted to pilot this and they have some Google certified teachers that are just loving Google and we're real proud of them. So, anything?
Yeah, I think it's great. And I, it see, for me, after visiting the school last year and then seeing this is not, obviously not a surprise. And, you know, I'll reiterate that I think it is good that we do pilot things and, you know, when we were talking about professional development too, I know that a lot of this comes from, uh, from the teachers there. And I've talked about, um, you know, wanting some of our own teachers to do some, you know, PD and kind of the cross-pollination of ideas that are working really well. And, um, I'd really like to see more of this across the county because it's obviously a, uh, a huge success. So, kudos to the teachers especially.
Well, and I'd like to say I appreciate some of the wording that was chosen, legendary and respect and happy because I truly believe you can talk to a lot of people after they grow up, they're not so happy and they don't respect so much and they're not so legendary. So you keep those things in mind and you can do what you want to do. So I just love those choices of, of words that you guys used. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. And I liked the bow tie touch on some of the stuff.
I really did. Great touch. That was awesome.
And I asked Dr. Meyer, is anything?
I had nothing to do with it.
He did not do anything about it.
Excellent.
Can we invite them to come up? The parents didn't get to take a picture while they were speaking. Can we have them come up here?
How about they come up and take pictures? Yeah, come on up, guys.
Great presentation.
And then they can sneak out the door.
Yes.
Ready to go to bed, do homework.
What do you want us to do?
Just smile.
You want us to get out the way?
No, I think if you guys sit there and smile, it'd be perfect. They're not tall enough to cover you. I don't know. Some of them are getting pretty close. All right, are we ready? Oh, you guys look so good. Let's close this. All right, one, two, three. Just keep smiling, you're doing great. Just a few more, doing good. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for our necklaces. Mm-hmm, thank you.
It was wonderful.
Just a few minutes? Yeah. So your report will be next, right?
All right. So, um, next week is the National School Lunch Week. Uh, our school nutrition department has left a coupon at your place. You're invited to have lunch at any of our schools as frequently as you would like next week. Um, and we will cover the cost of the meals. Our lunches are nutritious and kid appealing. I think they're, they are adult appealing as well. So, so go to any school you want all week long and you can eat lunch there. So, uh, I'd love, love to see you.
All week, baby.
All week. That's right.
It's a pretty good deal. I might go to like three or four different schools, they'll never know. One day.
Walk in the high school, my heart, I'm going to have a heart attack. What are you doing here?
That'd be great. All right, so, um, October is Disability Awareness Month. Uh, during the month, we celebrate the uniqueness of each, each of our students. Thank you for your support, our special education program. And, uh, this has been left here as well for you, so, perfect. Yep. All right, um, other things, uh, been real busy the, the last couple of weeks, all of us have, I know. Um, I've had some exciting times. Um, I was invited to participate in the Blacksburg High School Homecoming Parade and, and I actually rode in a 1966 Mustang convertible. It was incredible. It was, I was really scared to move it, I was afraid to touch anything. It was so awesome, but just had a great time. And then, um, that Friday, went to the football game, invited to the tailgate at Blacksburg High School and Ms. Graham was serving, serving dinner for everyone and that was really good food.
It was very good.
Where was the food catered from?
Uh, it was catered from, uh, Top of the Steers PKs.
Just great. Excellent food. Um, next, I had the opportunity also to go back last week to Blacksburg High School and Chief Wilson spoke to our Black Awareness Club about the Books to Badges Program. And, uh, just a real good reception for him and a lot of great questions. And there were questions beyond the Books to Badges Program, which is a great program where, um, the, uh, the Blacksburg Police Department will support students for their associate's degree and with no obligation to become an officer. But if they do, after the two years of being at the community college, they will actually then pay for the, um, the schooling to become an officer.
The Academy.
The Academy, that's the word, exactly. So, so it's a great, great program. And, and it was really neat too, they got, they were able to have dialogue with Chief Wilson about current issues. And I thought that was very important as well. And then he just, he just handles them just, just perfectly. And so it was just a great, great, great time. And, uh, Ms. Weaver came as well, so thank you, Ms. Weaver, for being there. Then I had the chances this past Friday to go to the tailgate at Christiansburg High School. Another great dinner, I don't know where that was from, it was, the pork and chicken was really good. And so, uh, and then off to the football game as well. And that was a great night. Um, the, well, except the result of the game, but it was still a great night. This past Saturday, uh, we had, uh, the Montgomery County Education Association, I see some of our members in the back, had a great, a great kids' first event at Christiansburg Primary School. And in fact, we had the Bellevue Bees there, the CHS Theater Department, the KIPS, um, Band was there. It was just a wonderful, wonderful day to celebrate public education and, uh, some great speakers and, um, some just very encouraging things that were said about public education. So, so thank you guys for, um, for actually organizing that. Besides that, I don't know, yesterday I had the opportunity to, I just couldn't resist myself. I was going past Christiansburg High School and there was, they were playing tennis and PE and I went out and played with them. And, um, and, and I think Coach Cromer, he, he was very nice to me on Twitter and, uh, said that I won that point where I was a servant, I served in the net, so. So, but just, just had a great time and, um, had fun with kids there, so. Board members?
Board members, you have anything to share? Anybody would like to start?
I can start. So I've taken a couple of days off from work and tried to work on visiting the schools, um, which is quite challenging, but Brenda thankfully helped me coordinate that. So I got five in last week and six in today. Um, and it literally blows me away to go and watch all the amazing things that are happening in our schools. The engagement that's happening with our students, the co-teaching, like we'd like to see, um, all the great technology and non-technology that they're using, um, so that we can appeal to all learning styles. We're doing an awesome job.
Anybody else would like to share?
I was asked to judge the VHS Homecoming Parade, so that was kind of, uh, fun, although, I don't know, I think I might have preferred to ride in the, uh, in that nice car.
Next time, we can switch the roles.
Yeah, it's really amazing. It's always amazing. I love working with you all and with our amazing staff, but it's really, it's always neat when you have a chance to interact with the students and to, to see our students, you know, they basically ran that, that whole event. And it was really, really cool to see.
I also got to ride in the parade. I got to ride in the new Mustang. My first car was a 67 Mustang, so this was like heaven for me too. Uh, I served as a judge in the Blacksburg High School Talent Show. This is the one where the kids go on to the Sheeler Motor Mile Grand Finale Competition. So I've seen what VHS is sending and I'm looking forward on, I believe it's November 5th, to see what our other high schools in the county are sending. We've done very well there, our county has, so hopefully we will again. Um, I did attend the MCEA program on Saturday and that was absolutely wonderful. And it's the first time you guys have done that and it was a wonderful success and I look forward to you doing it again. And I know sometimes people think of the MCEA as advocating for teachers, but I think it's a good reminder that you guys advocate for students all the time too. Yesterday, or actually Monday, uh, which was yesterday, I guess, I went to KIPS After School Program, which is called Teach for a Dom. And this is a program that was started in honor of Jocelyn Couture-Novak. She was the French teacher that was, um, lost on April 16th. And this program was started in her honor to teach French. And there's also a accompanying German program as well. And they do this at three schools, um, in our county. And it's just a great program and a great collaboration between Virginia Tech students and MCPS to see that. And, uh, the other thing, uh, one of my assignments, of course, is with the Educational Foundation. And we included our second, um, employee donation campaign at the end of September. And I'm excited to announce, uh, what the school that had the highest percentage of participation gets an ice cream party out of this. And we've been updating everybody regularly, you've probably seen the emails coming out. For a long time, Eastern Montgomery was heading that up, but coming from behind at the last minute, the ice cream party is going to go to Montgomery Central. So we're excited for them. We'll be treating them to an ice cream party. And then the only other thing I want to mention is that, of course, our grant cycle is going on right now. Monday is the deadline. And if you have any doubt of what an MCEF grant can do, what you saw tonight from Bellevue is a shining example because one of the programs that we funded there is the Bellevue Makers, along with the Broadway Bees and the Ukulele Club. And I tell you for sure, Bellevue has been a wonderful recipient of a lot of those funds. And I know those teachers, um, can tell you a lot about how much of an impact that makes, especially after losing the STAR Grant Program. So I just want to encourage our teachers, uh, you've got a little lesson a week, get out there. We are fully funded at $20,000 this year, thanks to a lot of local businesses and donors. So, we're looking forward to your projects.
Any other board members who'd like to share?
Um, well, I too went to Christiansburg FBLA Talent Show, so I see what Christiansburg's got to bring. That was a first day. So, um, and it was great. And, and you know, I just kind of wanted to take this time and say thank you to all the invitations that I get to come. I got invited to the tailgate, but it wasn't until that evening and then I didn't see the email until after work. But with everything I've got going on with my job right now and one of the girls that works for me being out, I'm just snowed under. So if I don't come, it's not because I don't appreciate it, it's just, I'm just got my hands and table full right now. So, but I do thank you for, for inviting me and thinking about me to come. Thank you.
Mr. Lyons or Ms. Franklin?
I will quickly wrap up what I've been doing in the month of September. I attended the SBA Legislative Conference in Charlottesville. That was on learning, you know, how to lobby and, um, hearing about the, how the state doing budget-wise, which wasn't very, very, um, positive unfortunately. And then, uh, there was a business and education relationship, which we know the state is looking for workforce-ready students, so there was a, a section about that. And most important or emphasized, uh, skill was, we wanted our kids, uh, it was a soft skill and it was human engagement for them to, you know, talk to the people in the interviews, how to dress up, be on time, just be able to socialize when you are face-to-face with, with individuals. That was the, that was the emphasis. I was also at the parade, it was fun. I attended, I was usually with the marching band, so I never actually see the parades the other end in the past years. So it was nice to be in the parade. And then, uh, in four days, every day, five schools, I completed my 20 school visits. So, uh, I'm really excited about it, like Ms. Graham shared. There are so many exciting things happening and it's always nice to see each and every school's differences. Uh, but there's a lot of teaching, engagement, art, music, technology, and a lot of books in the hands of the students and reading, since I am such a still hard copy book person upper, I was excited to see that as well. One more thing I did on the 19th of September is I participated in Youth Mental Health First Eighth Session. It's from eight o'clock to five o'clock, long day, but it was very, very, very informational and educational. And if you're interested in board members, it's, it's hard to dedicate a whole day. But if I learn a lot and I encourage all our teachers and staff and bus drivers, cafeteria workers, it's really important to recognize the students that needs help. We don't have to, you know, we're not the doctors, we don't have to treat them, but just recognizing they need help and just directing them where they can get the help is very, very important. So that will wrap up my September.
Okay, thanks. Uh, net, next grant proposal, um, Studies in Mathematical Epistemology. The Virginia Tech Math Department has applied for National Science Foundation funding to study models of middle school students' mathematical development. Researchers would collaborate with AMS teachers and students on the study. Results will help teachers identify ways to make math instruction more meaningful for students. This grant is brought to you tonight for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the grant as presented, board members?
So would.
I have a motion and second, any discussions? Seeing and hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, we approve the grant.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, uh, summer enrichment programs. This past summer, um, we challenged principals in, in elementary schools to create a, a cer- summer school program that was, um, a learning experience beyond remedial math and reading. Um, but yet it included that. And so several schools took us up on that challenge and created some really neat, um, programs this past summer. I'd like for Ms. Wickham to come up and share some things that our, uh, elementary schools did. Ms. Wickham?
Dr. Meyer, members of the board, I am excited about this opportunity to share with you some of the experiences that our students had this summer. So at Bellevue Elementary, we had 53 students who traveled to Space Camp. Their day began with breakfast and a grade-level book club. And then our students traveled in mixed-age groups to four different stations. They traveled to the sun, they traveled to the moon, they traveled to planets, they visited stars, they had hands-on engaging critical thinking activities, they had rocket launches, they had a visit to the STAR Lab, they used green screen technology to create student videos. They also, transportation and lunch was provided for the students. And I think pictures do a better job of showing you really the story of our students. As you can see, our children had a great time. And so did the teachers. At Eastern Montgomery, we had our ESL Project-Based Enrichment Program, where 24 students participated in a half-day, four-week program. Snacks and transportation were provided. Kindergarten through second grade was both literacy and math-focused. Activities centered around a farm theme. The children had a favorite story that was about a cow that could both moo and oink. The students liked this story very much because they compared it to themselves being able to speak both Spanish and English. The students really enjoyed being able to teach the adults the names of the animals in Spanish. They made crafts every day. While they also worked on math, one of the neat things was that every single day they took home a reading bag and they practiced reading to their families. In the upper grades, it was a focus on literacy and the students created models of the stories that they were reading. One of the things that they did, they read a silly version of The Three Little Pigs and they had to design a storm-proof home that would withstand high winds that were created by a fan. At KIPS Elementary School, there was a percussion day camp that included 20 students. Students learned techniques and pieces for various percussion instruments. And at the end of the four-day camp, every student was able to read music and play basic rock beats. So imagine being able to do this at the end of four days.
One, two, ah, one, two, ready, go. Ready, go. Ready, go. Where's the N?
As a side note, my son, he was a middle school percussion student. He was pretty impressed with that.
That's impressive, for, for these few days. Learning it, amazing.
At Price's Fork, there was a literacy camp that included 25 students for four days. There were meals for all four days. The students were able to drive the robotics team robot. There was a bug show. The students learned about slope using a noodle roller coaster. They made a fruit pizza from the Price's Fork Garden. They made tie-dye T-shirts. The fire department came with their fire truck and sprayed the students off. They got to explore the ambulance. They were able to get a book and food from Micah's backpack bus. They took a field trip to Three Birds Berry Farm where they picked blueberries and blackberries. They went to the library, they received library cards, they checked out books, and they visited the Moss Center of Arts. And that's quite a lot, four days. I think all of the children, if I recall correctly, were able to pick a pint of berries of their choice and able to take a pint of berries home. The I Dream Summer Program included students K through 12, and you can see there were 444 registrations. If you look at the list of classes that were offered, there were just a variety of different kinds of classes, from jazz music to duct tape designs, STEM for girls, just again, a variety of opportunities for our students K-12. And I think one of the things to note in the pictures, you might see some familiar faces. And a lot of smiling faces and a lot of children who really look like they're enjoying what they're doing. And again, a variety of activities. Camp Invention, 115 elementary students, took place, as you can see, June 6th through 9th. This was a science enrichment camp to develop creative thinking and teamwork, problem-solving skills. Again, if you take a look at the activities, I think one of my favorites, the lab where pigs fly and anything is possible, camp invention games. There's a link to a video, I include it here for your convenience, but this video is on our website and I would encourage you to, to check that out. Again, I think we'll see some familiar faces. And again, lots of smiling faces, students engaged. And again, lots of smiling faces, students engaged. Excited about what they were doing.
Thank you, Ms. Wickham. Really excited about our camps this summer. You know, we added the ones at the specific elementary schools, and something there, we provided transportation for the students, we actually fed the students. And I think we got some students there who wouldn't normally be able to, to go to camps during the summer, so we're really excited about that. And I think the creativity of our schools was shown as well. You know, I was talking to Ms. Boyle at Eastmont Elementary School, and something she mentioned to me just a couple of weeks ago, is that these kids who were at the, these were ESL students, these kids who were at her, at her session, they were recently tested for their reading, and those kids actually had no learning loss during the summer. Their reading levels were actually not, they were not lower than when they left, which is not the case for many, many students. And so, now I think our goal in the future is to continue to look at ways to, to provide opportunities for kids to get to school in the summertime, to have these opportunities to make sure there is no learning loss, and make sure kids are fed, and, and have great experiences regardless of, of their family's income situation. And so, very excited about that.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Added up to 700 or so kids, you know, even, that's wonderful.
It was, yep. 700 kids, that's just, that's just great.
That's pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, there might be some that did maybe multiple ones, but without that, even 700.
One young man told me at Camp Invention that he was able to come because of you.
Oh, my, did yes. That's great. Well, I know I had two, my own two girls went to the I Dreams Camp, and they had a great time.
They have established.
And one did percussion, and one did, well, they did several things, but some wacky science class or something, and they just loved it, so, so it was great. All right. Next is Authorization to Hire with Lapsed Funding. At our May School Board Retreat, we received a financial review in terms of our financial processes and procedures. And this is from an outside expert. The review showed a drastic need for additional staff in our finance department due to the workload and the need for checks, checks, better checks and balance system of our finances. We discussed that we reviewed the lapsed funding projected for the current year. We do have lapsed funding that would fund these positions. Tonight, I'm seeking approval for a spending plan to add these two positions. In addition to that, with that lapsed funding, when issuing nurse contracts this past, this past year, the nurses were not, were mistakenly not given their years of experience. And the way we figure nurse experience is, like other employees, is it's a one-to-one for school experience in terms of years, two to, one to two for outside experience. And so, we did not give them their experience, we have to go back and make those corrections to contracts, and we'll, we'll do that immediately. In fact, tomorrow morning, our nurses will receive an email, letting them know this, this will be corrected, and they'll be asked to give us some information regarding their outside experiences prior to working for us. And so, tonight, I'm asking for approval to use that lapsed funding for, for those two reasons.
May I have a motion to authorize the superintendent to hire and realign position using lapsed funding from 2016-17 personal expenditures?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. May I, any discussions, board members?
I certainly agree with, you know, making these, these adjustments. I, I get a little nervous when we, or, especially the nurse one, seems like a mistake, that, I don't know, if there's a problem with our process there, or whatnot. I mean, I think thankfully, it's something that we can cover here, so, but, you know, if that's something that needs to be reviewed, to make sure that we.
Yeah, I can speak to that. You know, this past year, unlike most years because of the new Evergreen Study, our HR Department had to go and by hand, actually place everyone at the proper step. Every single employee had to go and be adjusted by hand. Usually, you know, in a situation when folks get a step, or folks get a percent raise, the system pretty much does it for us. And so, the nurses were, were moved to a different scale, and, or they were not moved to a different scale as opposed to have been, it was just an oversight. So, we apologize to the nurses, and we'll, we'll get that straight real soon here. See you back there.
That's great.
Thanks for being here. Do y'all agree? All right.
Any other questions, or anything else to discuss? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve the authorization.
Okay, thank you. Next, Capital Projects Discussion. We had interview team, interview, design firms for Falling Branch Project this past week, and they've narrowed it down to two firms, and, which, they'll be given an additional presentation at the end of next week, and hopefully, we'll have a final decision by our next school board member as to which A&E firm we're going to actually use for this process. Just to update you on, in terms of money from the board supervisors, I spoke to Mr. Meadows today, and how, how they plan to allocate money to us will be, one, we will choose the A&E firm that will work with us, and then, they will give us a price as to what they will charge us to do it. And then, once you all approve that at the next board meeting, we will send the request for that amount to the board supervisors. Then the, and then what will happen then is, the architectural engineering firm will, they will then do an estimate of the cost of the project. Based on that estimate, we will then resubmit another request to the board supervisors for that amount. We had originally talked about just a flat $10 million, but the board supervisors want a more exact number, and so. Questions or thoughts about that?
I guess in the past, we've done, we've done it where we requested a certain amount of money, and if there was a carryover, then that, that money was either returned, or was put aside for the next project, right?
And that still will be the case. We'll, we'll get an estimate from the engineers, and, and the board supervisors, they've committed to.
Sure.
Funding the project, and they will give us that amount of money, and then any, any leftover funds will, will be, yeah, sent back. And, so.
It's just good to hear that we're moving.
Yes.
Excited about how fast things are going to go, and the next step.
Yep, absolutely. Can't stop the momentum here.
No.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Are there any matters of unfinished business, board members? Seeing and hearing now, how about a new business? Any board member would like to bring an item? Hearing and seeing now, we'll go to announcements and information. Any board members have an announcement or information to share at this time? Next item will be upcoming school board meetings. Any questions regarding the agendas ahead? Note that we have the legislative meeting, 11 o'clock, Christiansburg High School, on the October 28th, if you can make it. There are no questions, then we go to the closed session. Our next order of business is closed session. May I have a motion to go into the closed session to discuss two student matters, one personnel matter, and one legal matter, as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of Code of Virginia? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we are in closed session.